I'd like to call this meeting of the Clay County Commission to Order. We will begin this evening with our invocation from Pastor Les Clark. If you would come forward, please, and lead us in prayer.
Thank you for the honor to bring the invocation tonight. I want to actually just open up with a quick scripture. First Timothy, Chapter 2, says, "First of all, then I urge that entries and prayers and petitions and thanksgiving be made on behalf of all men for kings and all who are in authority, so that we may lead a tranquil and quiet life in all godliness and dignity." Let's bow our heads together. God, first, let me say thank you on behalf of all who are gathered here today. Thank you for your many blessings. Thank you for life itself. For the measure of health, we need to fulfill our callings for sustenance and for friendship in this community. Thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work and for the honor of bearing appropriate responsibilities. Lord, in the scriptures, you have said that citizens ought to obey the governing authorities, and since you have established those very authorities to promote peace, order, and justice, therefore I pray for this city, in this county, Clay County, and all of its cities officials, and those that are gathered here this evening. God, I am asking that you graciously grant each one of them wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and issues of our times. I pray that they will have a sense of the welfare and true needs of our people in this community, in this county. I ask, Lord, that you will give them a keen thirst for justice and rightness, confidence in what is good and fitting, that each one of them would have the ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement. And I pray, Lord, for each of them, for personal peace in their lives and joy in their task. God, I ask tonight for the agenda set before them today. Please give an assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those who live and work in and around our beloved Clay County. I pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you. Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Nolte.
Here.
Commissioner Withington.
Present.
Commissioner Lawson.
Here.
Commissioner Wagner.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Thompson.
Here.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Here.
Next on our agenda is the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion? Commissioner Johnson, you are recognized.
I move to approve tonight's agenda.
Motion has been made for the approval of this evening's agenda. Are there any comments or questions? Seeing none, you are recognized to close. I close. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Withington.
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson.
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson.
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Yes.
Motion passes, five zero.
Comments? Are there any members of the public who would like to come forward and speak on any subject to address the commission? Seeing none. That brings us to our consent agenda. Administrator?
The consent agenda allows the commission to act upon items considered to be routine and approved in one motion. These may include items that have been reviewed by the commission in a prior session. There will be no separate discussion unless a commission requests that an item be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. There are two items on the consent agenda this evening. The first item is minutes from the July 11th Commission meeting, and then Resolution 2024-212 is approving invoice payments from July 10th through July 12th in the amount of $380,551.87 for 237 invoices.
Thank you. Is there a motion related to the consent agenda, Commissioner Johnson?
Yes, I move to approve tonight's consent agenda.
Motion has been made for the approval of this evening's consent agenda. Are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Withington.
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson.
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson.
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Yes.
Motion passes, five zero.
That brings us to our regular agenda. First item on this evening's regular agenda is 2024-205. Administrator?
Resolution 2024-205 is a consideration for requests for the waiver of fees, interest, penalties, and taxes due to a county error. The applicant is Craig and Patricia Thompson, and I believe the applicant is in the audience this evening.
Thank you. If the applicant would like to come forward, by the way, and this is for anyone who wishes to speak, please, when you come up, make sure that the green light is on, so the microphone is active. State your name and then proceed with your statement. So please proceed.
Yes, sir. Craig Thompson. Here to, I purchased a new pickup in 2022, June of 2022. Of course, every year, come about January, I get a statement from the county assessor to including additional vehicles. We completed the form, I completed the form, sent it in the mail. Come taxes at the end of December of 2023, paid those, went to license the truck, re-licensed the truck in February of 2024 this year, maybe it was April or June. It was actually June. Couldn't get it registered for some reason online, went down the county, went to the DMV. They looked through both 23 and 22's property, personal property tax, says, hey, wait a minute, your truck isn't on the 23. I was puzzled why it couldn't be on there, because I had sent the forms in. And I remember filling it out, because I didn't know whether to use at the time. It's a Ram pickup. Use the word Dodge or use the Ram, so I remember filling it out. Anyhow, I did go down to the alternate and got it paid down there, and then that's when they assessed the penalty and the interest, and that's why I asked them, wait a minute here, why am I paying that? I thought I had paid it or registered it. And that's when they said, well, I could come here and request the waiver of it. They acted, I should say, the perception I got from the folks was this does happen on occasion, not maybe all the time, but it does happen. So filled it out and then got a phone call that I should attend tonight's meeting for it.
Okay. Are there any questions of the commission for the applicant? Commissioner Johnson, go ahead and push your button again. Oh, I'm sorry. Are there any questions or comments from any commissioners? Okay. Very good. Commissioner Johnson?
Mr. Thompson, I don't know if it was explained to you, but the tricky part for us on the commission is the only way that we can waive fees technically or legally with the way that law is written, that we don't govern that law, is the state tells us is if there is a fault on the side of the county, and that was the county made a mistake. And so for that to happen, we have to show that the county made a mistake. Here we have, if I understand this right, you say you turned in the, whatever the form is to get your, to notify that you have that vehicle.
Had the vehicle.
And you're saying that the county didn't log it properly, didn't get it for whatever reason. Is there anything you have that can show that, to prove that, that we can, and what's to prevent other people from coming and just say, hey, I turned it in, you just didn't get it? Is there anything you could show that we could say, hey, yeah, you're right, this is our fault, we can waive these?
I don't know. I don't think so. I know, for example, this year, we did it online, got confirmation, it went in, got notice from the county, hey, you haven't filled it out. And I sent a response that, yes, it was filled out online. And they sent a second notice that says, hey, you haven't filled one out online. We took a screenshot of it to prove that we had completed it online. So I don't know if that's probably a challenge the county has had in the past, but I mean, this is two years in a row now. One was, filled it out manually, mailed it in.
Did you happen to submit that screenshot? I'm not seeing it in the.
I did not include that, because that was this year's, when I filled out for January of 2024. The manual one I did for the truck was in January of 2023, when I mailed it into the county.
Yeah. So that's the one that we really need to see. So you didn't do that one online, that one for the truck you did, you mailed it in.
Correct. Correct.
And there's no, we don't have any proof of that or anything, nothing we can show? And I'm not saying.
I don't know that I kept a copy of it. I would have to go dig in files, and I don't know. I don't know if the county keeps copies of the physical records of what I sent in.
Okay, I see Commissioner Lawson has some questions. Commissioner, you are recognized.
Yeah. So let me understand this. When you got the bill in '23, the truck was not on there. They did not have the truck on there?
Correct.
Okay. But you did have the truck at that time?
I did, yes.
Okay. Did you make a notation on there, hey, I got a truck, and here's what it is and all of that?
I did not, because my wife says, here's what we owe the county, and I wrote a check to the county for the amount.
But your truck was not on that document, right?
Not.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
And I say that, I don't recall seeing that document. It's when I went to the assessor that they pointed that out. Actually, it was the DMV that first pointed it out and says, hey, your truck's not on here. So I went in with the copies that said I had paid to show them that, hey, I paid my taxes, personal property taxes, and that's when the DMV says, oh, wait a minute here, your truck isn't on the 23. That's the first I realized it wasn't on there.
Commissioner Johnson?
Sir, do you think there's any possibility you have anything at home that would show that you submitted this in 20, was it 2022, when you got the truck?
2023. 2022 is when I purchased the truck and paid sales tax for it.
So '23 is when you would have.
January '23 is when I would have filled out the annual personal property tax additions or subtractions.
So let me tell you where I'm at on this. If you had something that could show that any kind of proof, any kind of receipt, something, and I don't know what that can be, that showed you did your part, then we might be able to say, hey, well, maybe there's a fault on the county's side. Absent that, I don't know that we can say that definitively, which ties our hands. I mean, I'd love to give everybody their property taxes back myself, but we can't do that.
Well, and I'm not trying to get out of it. I, you know, feel responsible to do that. I've done that with every vehicle or trailer or whatever I purchased or sold in the past. It's just I know I did that in January 2023, and that's why I was shocked when it came time to register it here a month ago.
So here's two options that I'm seeing. One, I think at this point, and I don't want to speak for my colleagues here, but my guess is it would probably be denied at this point without any further proof. So if we ended right here, the motion would probably be to deny it, and I bet that's how it would go. Again, I don't want to speak for my colleagues. Or we can table this if you think you might have some information that you can bring back at another time.
I will take a look in my documents to see if I made a photocopy of it prior to mailing.
So you prefer we table this until maybe next week?
Sure. Next week's calendar, real quick, but yeah, next week will be fine, if it works in your JIS's agenda.
Mr. Assessor, did you have something you wanted to add to the conversation?
Tracy Baldwin, Clay County Assessor. Just to clarify, there were no forms mailed out for personal property since 2019. All the assessments are due online unless the account has been requested to send paper. This account hasn't ever been requested paper. And I did include the 24, March of 27th of 2024, when he did his completed online assessment. And it was done online completed, and there is no pickup on the 24 either.
Right. Thank you. Okay. Does anyone else wish, any other staff or anyone else wish to speak on this issue? I sense, though, that there may be a motion to table. Just for those who don't follow parliamentary rulings, the, once we table it, that will cut off discussions. I want to make sure everybody has had their say before we make that particular motion, if that is indeed where we go. So I want to make sure everybody has their opportunity to speak. Any other commissioners have any comments that they would like to make? I tell you what, before, okay, if that's the, John, I'm sorry, excuse me, Commissioner Carpenter, please, go right ahead.
Yes. So first of all, I just want to say, you know, sorry you find yourself on this predicament. I know it's, you know, not fun owing the fines and whatnot. You know, it's my view. I think I'm unlikely to change my perspective. You know, if we were to table it an additional week, I'm likely to vote to decline the waiver, just because state statute does have a pretty tight limit on when we can do that. And so I just want to express that to you in terms of saving you perhaps another trip out here to do this again next week, should we go in that direction. Where I'm at is I think I'm probably a vote to decline whether we do it tonight or next week. So I just want to let you know that to potentially save you some time.
Any other commissioners wishing to speak? Before I entertain a motion on any part of this, would you like to make any closing comments before we go forward?
No, I'm good. I will look at home to see if I have something. Since the other gentleman mentioned it was done electronically, I don't know if I kept something electronically to show that or not. So I'll look.
With that, oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Withington?
I have a question for Tracy. Do we, so I know previously I used to take a screenshot anytime to, and I would click on the time in the bottom so you could see the date and time. Does the system currently, did we do an upgrade? I can't remember. That now sends an email confirmation when these get submitted?
No, we weren't able to ever accomplish that with our software. There was, it wouldn't do that. We did change the end statement, so you can actually print it off or take a screenshot, and it does say, please screenshot for your final submission. In this case, this was a final submission on the 24 that was as a no change. So any of the vehicles that were on 23 were just accepted for 24.
Okay. But you're saying there's no way with our software that we could.
The current software that my department uses for persons online, it's not capable of sending a confirmation email. So we, like I did, we did change the ending statement. So once they hit the confirm, it'll give a confirmation number, and it does say, please screenshot for your records. And you can also print that page off for your records.
Yeah, I always just take a screenshot and then I'll save it like.
But I did attempt to try to get it to be able to send a confirmation email, and it was just not capable with our software.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments? In case I will entertain a motion related to 2024-205.
Mr. Thompson, first of all, I apologize you have to go through this. I know this is kind of a hassle. So what I'm going to do, I'm going to do what's called table this motion, which means we're not going to do anything with it, give you an opportunity to find some more evidence that might support your case and come back. If you don't find more evidence, you have the option of calling in and just saying, I'll withdraw my.
Absolutely.
Because that, with, absent any more evidence, I doubt you'll get a waiver, just because we're bound, as was mentioned by state law. So with that, I move to table this motion. Motion has been made to ta, excuse me, I'm sorry, go ahead. I was going to give the exact.
Oh, go right ahead.
Sorry. I move to table 2024-205.
Motion has been made to table 2024-205, tabling motion is a privileged motion. Therefore, we will go to a roll call vote. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Withington?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Motion passes, five zero.
Next, the second and final issue on our regular agenda is 2024-213. Administrator?
Resolution 2024-213 is a consideration approving invoice payments for the Clay County Prosecutor's Office from July 10th through July 12th in the amount of $5,317.21 for five invoices.
Is there anyone here to speak on this motion? I do not see anyone. Commissioner Johnson, you are recognized.
Move to approve 2024-213.
Motion has been made for the approval of 2024-213. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Withington?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
I recuse myself.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Motion passes, four in favor, one recusal.
Thank you. That concludes our regular agenda. That brings us to discussion items. We have one item on for discussion. Would you like to introduce that, Administrator?
Thank you, Commissioners. We have guests here this evening from the University of Missouri Extension to provide some information to the commission about labor and workforce development. And with that, I would turn it over to our guests.
Thank you. And as I mentioned before, make sure the light is on. Introduce yourself, and then please proceed.
Thank you for having me, and thank you, Commissioner Thompson, for inviting me. My name is Matt Peasald, and I'm here today to share a little bit about what MU Extension does within workforce development, and also to share a little bit about some of the data that I've been examining for the Clay County region itself. And for those of you who might not be familiar with MU Extension, I like to explain us as the local branch of the University of Missouri system, with campuses, of course, at University of Missouri, Kansas City, Kansas City, Columbia, St. Louis, and Enralla. And it's our mission to bring the best practices, training, and knowledge from campus to the community so that our main streets can thrive, so our communities and our businesses can also thrive. And with MU Extension, there's four main divisions. There's the Agriculture and Environment Division, and they work with things like Master Gardeners, which is a very popular program across the Kansas City region. We have Youth and Family. With that includes groups like 4H and other youth development programs. And then there's Business and Community, which I am a part of as Labor and Workforce Development Specialist. Within that spectrum of the work that we do, we develop programs to address the workforce needs in the community and around the state. One of the programs I've shared with Commissioner Thompson in the past has been the Recovery Friendly Workplace. It is a program designed to help businesses certify themselves and to become more hospitable and more inclusive of individuals who are recovering from substance misuse. That could be something like opiates, where they got injured on the job, or other forms of substance misuse. We've certified about 30 to 40 businesses across the state, including three or four in the Kansas City region. And we're always looking for new ways to certify businesses, nonprofits, government agencies. And so we're always looking for opportunities to help broaden the workforce pipeline here in Clay County. We also work with veterans through the Heroes to Hives Program. It is a beekeeping and entrepreneur program that's designed to help veterans and their family members learn about the process of beekeeping, how to start a business, how to develop products, how to market, and then how to form a community of support and wellness around veterans that isn't focused on the mission itself. And we found there's a lot of psychological benefits to that as well. We also work to address the mental health within our communities. We provided mental health first aid training across the entire state in all 114 counties, including local school districts such as North Kansas City Public Schools. And so the idea is that we go into these businesses, organizations, churches, communities, and we help them learn to identify the signs of mental stress, mental unwellness, and then how to connect those individuals to the professionals who can help them. So just like first aid helps someone in an emergency, mental health first aid is designed to reduce incidence of suicide in our communities. We also work with the building trades and helping to grow out the construction industry. I work with a pre-apprenticeship program called Missouri Works Initiative, and its mission is to increase the pipeline for the building trades. They've had a challenge finding enough workers in that industry. And so they're working to recruit more women, veterans, and persons of color. And so that's been a really successful program. And I believe they're going to be relocating the program actually to Clay County in a couple months, and they're forming a partnership with Google to help address some of those challenges with finding enough workers to build all the new data centers that are happening in the Northland. Then lastly, I work with Career Pathway Exploration, and that's focused on helping our young students in our communities identify ways to find the correct pathway that's best for them. Topics include things such as construction exploration, what does it take to move into a good-paying job within the construction industry. It also includes interview preparation and also gap year, how to make the most of your gap year. A lot of the young folks today aren't sure what they want to do, so sometimes they decide to take six months or a year off, or maybe work for six months, get some life experience, and then move on to education. But the real reason I'm here today is to share a little bit about what is happening in Clay County itself. We'll be looking at some of the population trends, workforce trends, and factors impacting the workforce itself. So just a quick snapshot, Clay County has about 260,000 people living here, with a workforce of about 121,000, and a median household income as of 2022, about 75,000. This is about $6,600 above the median The overall trend is that Missouri population growth is positive, unlike some states such as Illinois, for example, but the population growth is slow. The good news is that the core metro counties of the Kansas City region have experienced stable growth, and we'll look at some of those numbers in the upcoming slides. The overall challenge for Missouri in places even like Kansas City, even though it's growing, is that we have an aging population. So by the end of the decade, there are going to be a lot of baby boomers who have chosen to retire, and that's great for them, but that isn't always a positive factor for the businesses that are losing all that talent and experience. And so this chart on the screen there looks at the different age cohorts. So our young adults over a 20-year period has grown by 0.7%, so just a few thousand over that time period. The core workforce of 25- to 54-year-olds The core workforce of 25- to 54-year-olds has actually declined 2.8%. And then the senior population of 55- to 74-year-olds, who may be retired, may not yet be retired, has grown by 61%, so significantly faster than the rest of the population, and has grown by almost 600,000 across the state. So that's going to be changing the demand for services, particularly around healthcare. And there could be a growing demand in those industries specifically. The total population for Clay County has been consistent throughout the pandemic and ongoing, so that's a positive factor. But when we look at what's driving the population growth in Clay County, we've primarily driven by births, deaths, and then the number of individuals who are choosing to move into Clay County itself. So from a natural perspective, simply meaning births minus deaths, the county population increased by about 16,000 to 18,000, and then net migration accounted for the rest of that. So about 60% of the population growth in Clay County wasn't because of locals growing the population, so to speak. Locals meaning people living in Clay County. It's by individuals who've chosen to move into Clay County, either from Platt, Jackson, or Johnson County primarily. In case you're wondering where they're coming from, as probably no surprise, it's from Jackson, Platt, and Johnson Counties primarily are moving into Clay County. And then when they choose to leave Clay County to move somewhere else, they're primarily going to those same counties. But what I found most interesting about this was about 6,500 people each year are choosing to move out of Clay County, but another 7,500 are choosing to move into Clay County. So that creates a net positive effect, about 1,000 to 1,200 on an annual basis. Each year varies, and I'd like to see some more recent data to back that up. Looking at the labor force within Clay County itself, this time over a 10-year period, again, the young adult population is growing. Within the workforce, about 7.6%. The core workforce, about 9%. But again, that older population of 55- to 74-year-olds is growing much faster than the rest of them, and that will create some challenges as we move forward. Looking at the workforce trends, the workforce has exceeded the pre-pandemic population, both in Clay County and in Kansas City itself. It's just a chart looking at the number of workers. There's approximately 12,000 more workers today than there was prior to the start of the pandemic, so that's a positive factor. That suggests that people are indeed entering the workforce, and the economy is growing. When I look at Clay County specifically, again, it's 3,000 to 4,000 up from prior to the pandemic. Been a bit of a downward turn toward the end of 2023. Some of that might be seasonality or some challenges measuring the data. So for example, construction workers tend not to work during the winter months due to their ability to be on the job site. I find this one interesting. This looks at who lives in your community and who works in your community. So on a daily basis, about 40,000 or so Clay County residents live and work in Clay County, but an additional 83,000 commute outside of Clay County to work. So two out of three residents in Clay County who work, work somewhere else, primarily Jackson County, but other counties as well. But then additional 68,000 migrate or commute into Clay County during the daytime, and then they would return home at the end of the day. So that shows there's a fair amount of dynamic movement on a daily base on the region. And so we can't really think of ourselves just entirely as a county. We also have to think of ourselves as an entire metro and how different decisions impact all of us within the community itself. So some of the factors that are going to be challenging for us is one, that the aging population. Baby boomers are retiring. There's substance misuse. We have programs addressing that, like the Recovery Friendly Workplace. Suicide rates are relatively high in Missouri, particularly amongst middle-aged males and amongst the youth. Limiting factors that the entire country, not just Missouri, will be facing is that by the end of the decade, there'll be about 79 million baby boomers have retired. And if you calculate that out, that's about one out of every four people in the United States will be of retirement age. So this could be the largest amount of potential retirees the country ever has had. And so again, that will create new demand for healthcare and services like that. But it also means that there'll be other challenges filling those spots. Because as the baby boomers retire, we often think it's the millennials who are going to be replacing them, but they're already in the workforce. Some millennials are actually in their early 40s already. It's actually Generation X that will be filling those positions, and that's a generation that's not quite as big as the baby boomers themselves. Some of the limiting factors, I said, was substance misuse. This is a statistic from about 2020, 2021. About 11.4% of men ages 25 to 54, again, that peak period of work productivity, and they're not in the workforce, and they're not seeking work, which means about 7 million people across the country. And in the survey, importantly, it found that 47% had taken pain medication within the last 24 hours. So this suggests that those individuals have some health concerns, and there's something that's keeping them out of the workforce. And so programs such as the Recovery Friendly Workplace helps broaden that pipeline and help employers be more receptive to hiring individuals who maybe have had a challenging past. We also work to address suicide through our suicide prevention programs. In 2021, about 1,200 people died from suicide. This comes out to about one person every seven hours, or roughly three people every day. So this is a constant and present factor in each and every day of their lives. My mother's neighbor, for example, committed suicide. He was probably in his 90s, but during the pandemic, he committed suicide. So we're working with the state and other agencies to increase access to support and help. You might have seen this on some of the billboards around the metro. There's a 988 Suicide Crisis Lifeline now, just like 911, but you can call for help. You can text for help, and someone will pick up the line or text and communicate with you and help walk, and help talk you off that ledge, so to speak. If you want to learn more about that, there's a QR code that can be scanned, and you can learn more about some of the resources. We also help take these resources and distribute them through our schools and through the counselors, and so we're doing our best to try to reach the populations that are potentially at risk. So in looking to the future, it will continue to be a challenge for businesses and governments to find the workers that they need. And so in that vein, I started to look at, well, what is our youth population doing here in Clay County? And so this chart here looks all the way back to roughly 2000 to the present. How many 0- to 5-year-olds live in Clay County? So it peaked back in 2008, came back up in the 2016s to 2020s, but then it began to decline roughly around the same period as the beginning of the pandemic. And this matches the statewide data, too, where population, number of people being born has declined leading up to the pandemic, and then declined even more since then. So then I said, okay, well, what's, what's just around the corner? What's the next portion of the work, future workforce look like? And so I looked at the K- to 5 population within Clay Counties and your different school districts. I looked at Kearney, Smithville, and Excelsor Springs. And those populations are relatively stable, but particularly for Smithville and Excelsor Springs, they've begun to decline some, and so they've reached their recent peak. And so over time, this slightly smaller population will move from, you know, the grade school level to middle school and through high school. Looking at Liberty and North Kansas City districts, we kind of see the similar trend, where they've already peaked within a K- through 5 population, and they're gradually declining. When I looked at the middle school populations in general, they had also plateaued. But for the high school population, Liberty and North Kansas City is still continuing to grow at this time. And I raise this not to, to point out the challenges in the school districts, but to, from a workforce perspective, is that unless something changes, we can expect there's simply to be future workers in our communities because there's simply fewer people being born in our community. And there's also, you know, 10 to 20 years out going to be more people dying simply because that's the age of a generation that is much larger than the rest. And so as I said, workers will be a challenge to find. Brief look at some of the industries across the Kansas City metro. This one looks at transportation. As you know, we're building out of warehouses in the region, data centers and things like that. And so within that area, we've seen relatively strong growth within transportation and distribution. Looking at production and manufacturing, we're about recovered since the pandemic. I suspect when the Panasonic plant opens in roughly another year or so, we'll easily exceed these pre-pandemic levels, but we're approaching those levels already. They provide a lot of jobs within the region. Construction, it's already recovered since the pandemic, and it's continuing to grow. As I said, we've got a lot of projects, both in the Northland and on other parts of the metro. The construction of the Google Data Center and the meta will continue to drive this for the foreseeable future, the next 10 to 15 years. And so just a quick recap, we looked at some of the population trends, what's going on within Clay County, within the workforce, and some of the challenging factors and some of the ways that MU Extension is working to address that. So if you want to learn more and see what's going on, we put together a regular podcast called the Show Me Most Successful Podcast, and we feature success stories. We have about five or six already featuring successes within Kansas City through businesses that we've helped. Another division that I failed to mention with Business and Communities is the SBDC. There's a small business development center located at UMKC, and they help businesses start, grow, and evolve. And they've done a lot of great work there, and we often partner very closely with them. If you're interested more about what's going on within workforce, I produce a Navigator newsletter on a quarterly basis. Those all can be accessed by scanning the QR codes. And then our region produces the Urban West Regional Newsletter on a monthly basis, and it gives you a great overview of the broad work of what MU Extension does. It's more than just businesses. It's more than just agriculture, our master gardeners. We do so many different things, and it's a great way to see what we're doing within the community itself. And then lastly, we produce Economic Indicator Report. It's a two-page document that looks at different factors. The one on the screen looks at retirement risk by different industries. I have some copies here if anyone's interested in that. But it comes out on a basis of roughly two to three weeks. And then its frequency is a great way to see what's going on. I'll probably be producing one on the declining youth population here in Missouri in the near future. And so at that point, if I'd like to turn it over if you have any questions, if you want to connect, I have my contact information on the screen, and I'm open it up for any questions there might be.
Thank you for the presentation. Very, very educational. I had two questions, and they were kind of for the either end of the population
Sure.
distribution, and that is, there is kind of a, whether justified or not, but there's the idea that when people retire, they tend to go to Florida or someone else.
Sure.
So I'll ask both questions at the same time because they are kind of related, and then let you kind of answer them as you see fit. It seems to me that we could, if that scenario plays out, see a number of the people who retire leaving the area, which would decrease the, and I'm not saying they should because I plan to age in place. In fact, I'm currently doing that.
Sure.
But that would certainly affect the amount of services that they would be consuming. The other question, which is kind of related in that, is people, younger people, who would be relocating from, you know, surrounding areas of, you know, certainly the surrounding contiguous states to Missouri, but even beyond that, as our, do you see our area as being more attractive than some of the other municipalities that we might compete with for younger workers? And how do you see those trends kind of, kind of, you know, overlapping each other and affecting each other?
Sure. So far, I haven't seen a mass migration to Florida. Now, maybe that will change, but right now, that hasn't been happening since the pandemic. Really, Missouri has become a little bit more attractive. Maybe it's affordability compared to the coast, other factors like that. I'm not really sure. Other factors could be, you know, attracting folks that maybe grew up in Missouri, but then moved somewhere else to work. And Missouri's working hard to ex-broadband, broadband access, for example. University of Missouri Extension worked with that project. They're going to be bringing close to a billion dollars in investment in broadband all across the state. And so I'll, part of that goal from a workforce development perspective was to make the internet more accessible so people can live and work in their own communities and not have to go somewhere else for that. So in that sense, I haven't seen a lot of mass migration out. Now, again, maybe that will change. But the pandemic trend, at least for the past three to four years, was Missouri is doing a little bit better at attracting folks than they have been prior to the pandemic, which is what's sustaining our population growth at this time. Because if we didn't have migration coming into Missouri, our population growth due to the pandemic and fewer births would be negative at this time. So that's really what's sustaining the growth. And Kansas City itself and the region is one of the areas of the state that is really sustaining that growth, whereas many regions in the state is actually declining, even after you factor in migration and all the other factors. So we're on the right side of state for that perspective. Did I get all your questions, or did I miss one?
Well, no, certainly that, that, that helps very much. I like the way you wove those two, you know, potential trends together and how they would affect one another, because I think that does make a difference. One of the things, obviously, that we need to be thinking about doing is making our area, in our case, Clay County, a more attractive place for businesses to locate, but also obviously very much younger families to locate so that we can make sure that we have the workforce available. That's what's going to attract many businesses, is a ready workforce that is able to do the jobs that a given business would, would bring to the table. Further questions or comments? Commissioner Carpenter?
Thanks. Mostly, I just want to say thanks for the presentation. Big fan of the way you did it and, you know, the data. You talked a little bit about, well, you talked a little bit about working-age men not in the workforce and the concerns there. And so, you know, the overall statistic, of course, with working-age population is that it's at about 84% now for 25- to 54, which puts it the highest it's been since 2006, and right, hovers right around the all-time high since that stat has been tracked. But the one cohort in which that increase hasn't been seen at all-time highs is working-age men, and specifically folks who don't have a, men who don't have a college degree. That's the, that's where the biggest sort of decrease over time has been. And you, you sort of tied that in to, you know, the potential issues with substance abuse. You mentioned that I think 47% had used pain medication within the last 24 hours. And so I just, I don't know, I wanted you to talk more about thoughts about what, what to do about that, because that does, you know, whereas we're at all-time highs on workforce participation rates, which obviously is great, that is the one group that, that there seems to be some struggle with. And yeah, just any thoughts that, or insights you have into that?
Sure. I mean, in many ways, you're right in the fact that we're near relatively high participation rates. So it becomes a question of where you're going to find the workers. And again, it's like, how do you expand that pipeline at a time when the pipeline is kind of constrained? So some of that turns to focusing on population that were maybe looked over in the past. With opiates, that's why we have, for example, the Recovery Friendly Workplace. It's helping businesses understand what it takes to support an individual like that. And sometimes it's nothing really radical by any means, but maybe it's being a little bit more flexible in your scheduling. Maybe that individual has to, you know, take off a couple hours to go to a doctor appointment or to check in with a counselor or something like that. That doesn't mean they're not a productive employee, but they do have to have a certain degree of flexibility in order to continue to maintain their health in that area. It also includes other populations, such as individuals with disabilities and working with that. Some of the data actually suggests that this working remotely has actually been good for that population. It allows them to be productive and employed and work from home. And so that removes some of those barriers to that. And then the other population that's kind of really a challenge, and I know the Missouri Chambers is working to address this with the governor, is the fact that childcare all across the state, if you can even find it, is very expensive. And if you're in a lower-paying job, it might not economically make sense to be employed, even though you might have the skills and the energy and the talents, if it's going to cost you more for childcare than it would be to stay home with your child. And that applies to either gender. But so there's some of the challenges that we're all aware of, and we're trying to work towards.
Got it. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, thank you so much for being here. We appreciate the presentation. It's very enlightening, and as we go forward, trying to obviously make our county and our region more attractive to, to growth, I think these, these observations are going to be very handy for us to keep bear in mind.
Well, thank you for having me. If you have any organizations that would like me to come and speak, I'll be speaking at North Kansas City Public Schools this fall, and a couple of weeks at Smithville EDC. So I'm happy to come to Chambers, Lunch and Learns, and those sort of things. So please keep me in mind. If it's all right, I'll leave these handouts with your assistant here. Is that all right?
That would be great.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. That brings us to the end of our discussion items. Next is County Administrator comments. Administrator?
Thank you. Just to remind that the Commission's next meeting is next Thursday, July 25th, 6 o'clock here in the Chambers.
Very good. That brings us to Commissioner comments. Commissioner Carpenter, would you have any comments you'd like here to make?
Uh, thank you, Commissioner. I just want to briefly reiterate my views on our great country. And, you know, I've talked about it a number of times before, but I have expressed concern before and will again tonight that, that we're moving in a direction of that, that we're moving in a, a direction of too much divisiveness, too much turning your political opponents into your enemies. Obviously, everybody in this room, I am confident, fully condemns political violence in all forms. I know we all agree on that. But I think we have to go one step farther than just being against the easy thing, which is political violence. Of course, we're opposed to that. And I assume in the time ahead that we'll learn more that this person was, you know, some kind of, had whatever issues that led him to do that. But the problem is bigger than, than him. And what I know is that I love my conservative Republican brothers and sisters all across the country. You're my fellow Americans. You're my fellow humans. I also love the tug and pull between, you know, left and right. Without that, we wouldn't, you know, it, first of all, it's generated the greatest, richest, most powerful country in the history of the world. That's what the tug and pull has generated across time. So it's a system that works pretty good. We have, you know, empirically, all you got to do is look around to see that it works pretty good. But that counts on everybody sort of buying into that. Everybody buying into that, that the tug and pull is good and that it works. And it does. And I would just reiterate that it does. And the more we can view each other that way and see that it, across time, works pretty well, when we all see the value in it and see the value in each other and the worth of each other and each other's views, even when we disagree. I, I just want to remind everybody to, to please try to think along those lines when you can. Stop thinking of your fellow Americans and, and human people as, as your enemies. They're really not. Yeah, that's all. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Thompson? Mr. Johnson? Commissioner Lawson? Proceed.
Kind of copying what my wonderful Democrat friend just said. I, I think that up here, the one thing that I found refreshing is, I may not agree with any of you, but I never think of it as party. I think it just, well, I don't quite agree with that, but I get where you're coming from. And then it's over, you know, there's no animosity, or I don't feel any. And, and I think that's been good. I think that this group of people are a good example of the way I'd like to see the whole country be, but it isn't that way. I, I thank God that the worst President Trump got was a banged-up ear. In that moment, it could have been so much worse. Whether you like him or you hate him, the fact that somebody felt they could just go out there and shoot him because they didn't agree with his policies or whatever his, the gentleman's reasoning might have been, is frightening. Whether they're shooting at Biden or they're shooting at Trump or, you know, they're shooting at us. You know, it doesn't make a difference. It, it's the fact that this is, seems to be the mentality of, of a lot of people, you know. And it's not guns. I'm a gun girl. We all know that. But it's people's mentality and the fact that they hate that badly is unfortunate. So I think we keep doing what we doing. We spread our feeling of goodwill towards everybody we can. It just starts with each individual person and hopefully it'll, it'll all turn out okay. So whatever the outcome of, of the election is, we're going to keep on keeping on, you know? We've done it through good. We've done it through bad. We've done it through indifference. So it, we're, the country isn't going to cease to be. So God bless America and everybody here.
Commissioner Withington?
Yeah, so I just want to say, don't lose friends today over two guys that don't even know your name, so. But, you know, I just want to say thank you to Dr. Cecilia Robinson. She gave me a tour this afternoon of the Garrison School and Clay County African-American Legacy Center.
Oh, yes.
It's right down the street. And she has invited the commission. She would like to have us have a commission meeting at the Garrison School. So I told her I would mention that, take a, have a road trip right down the road. Also, you know, we're getting ready to start August, so we're eight months in. Want to know if we can get an update on the 2024 Road Preservation Plan. You know, we had like, I think, 30 roads on there for this year. Want to see what the schedule is and what the ETA for completion is of each road and maybe get the website updated to, to reflect that. We've had citizens asking about it, so this way they will know when those, each road is going to be done. Also, want to say congratulations to Trey Snyder from Liberty North. He was drafted in the fifth round, 144th overall by the New York Mets this past week in the MLB draft. Also want to give a shout out to Chase Porter from the Kearney Bulldogs. He, he just got invited down to Phoenix to participate in a pro day for the top high school baseball players in the country. And then also, I was looking at our board and commission form online. I want to see if we can add a field that says, have you donated to any current commissioner's campaign? I think for transparency and, you know, just, just for transparency reasons, I think we should know if the person applying for a board or commission is somebody that's maybe contributed to any of our current commission campaigns. So I don't know if that takes a discussion item or what, but would like to see that added to the field for the boards and commissions.
Think I can include your remarks?
Yep.
Very good. I'd like to address two subjects, one that I addressed last, last week. And I think it's something positive that certainly plays into the discussion item. Commissioner Lawson and I were at the Drug Court graduation. And the idea of the reclamation of lives that have been in disarray, I guess, might be one way to put it, is something that's intensely moving. I, I, I think Commissioner Lawson added greatly to the proceedings with her remarks. The observation was made that it might not be a bad thing if, and obviously, we, you know, it's during the daytime, so there are schedules to take into account. But I would certainly encourage any commissioners who wanted to attend either the Veterans Court or the Drug Court to do so. It is, it's the kind of thing that is truly inspiring. And I think that, I, I think that's really, the only word I can say is, it is inspiring to see people who have overcome their, their own inner demons, I guess maybe the only way I can think to put it. And it is, it is an experience I think that you will all, I think, walk away the better for having had. The other is, of course, the, the events of the past week, which have been alluded to. I, I think we would be remiss, and I know that the, the rest of the commission will, will join with the thought that apart from the attempt on the former president's life, a gentleman did lose his life, which is a horrific tragedy. And a number of other people were, were injured. These were people who went to this rally to express their, their God-given right, to express their political views. And it's the very heart of, of our process that people can express their views without fear. And we, we need to make sure that we protect that. I think when it comes, and I, I certainly take a lot of agreement in what Commissioner Carpenter had to say. We came through a period in this county, and Commissioner Thompson, of course, was also here during that time when we were in a, in a degree of torment and a degree of divisiveness here. That was, I don't know if it was unprecedented, unprecedented in county history, but it was certainly severe. I think, and I have said it before and I'll say it again, I think this commission has gone a long ways towards making sure that we have pulled back from those dark times. And I would say, I guess, to any of us and to all of us, try to be more ready to extend a hand than to raise a fist. I think that's, I think that is probably something that we could all keep in mind. And I think that we should, as we go forward, and reflect on not just the tragedies, and like I say, foremost, first and foremost, the death of the gentleman, but that it could have been, there could have been further deaths, there could have been further injuries. And I think we need to reflect on how it is we regard our fellow citizens. With that?
Can I say one quick thing?
Sure. Go ahead. Commissioner Lawson, did you need your microphone on?
There you go.
Hold on, let me recognize you. There you go.
I, just one quick thing. The neatest thing at that graduation was, one of the, each of the graduating people spoke. And, and it was so unbelievably touching how they were able to say, I've been drug-free, blah, I'm out of time. One gentleman thanked his daughter for hanging with him, you know, through all of this. She was just a little kid, probably 10 years old, something like that. And he apologized to her in, in court, which I thought was amazing. And she was grinning ear to ear. It was really touching. But another thing that I was so impressed with was Judge Alexander. He's the judge that rules over these people. And as they would come in, you know, he doesn't just say, hey, 120 days, you're out of here, you know, you're in jail, or 90 days, or whatever it might be. He seems to have the ability to look within these people. And one of the ladies said, she said to the judge, you saw something in me I didn't even see in myself. That just really was so reinforcing to me. I thought, God bless him, that instead of just saying, you're going to jail, he looks for an alternate way to help those people. And I, I was just unbelievably impressed with him. And when it was over, everybody went out and gave him a big hug. And, you know, it was, you could see there was a great relationship. The people that performed that program, they, all of the graduates spoke to them individually and said how impactful they were in their lives, that they couldn't have done it without them. And there was also a whole line of people that was, you know, as long as this whole thing, that were sitting there that had graduated the year before. And they were all there to support those people and be a resource for them if they ever start sliding backwards a little bit. I, I just, it was one of the neatest things that I've done. And I will, I will go every time. All of us need to go every time because it makes you realize, you know, we talk about the judicial system, money that we give and, you know, that type of thing. But until you see some of these programs firsthand, you don't realize what a responsibility we have and how much good we can do. So I, it was unbelievably rewarding. Thank you for bringing it forward to me and letting me participate was wonderful. We should all do it.
Thank you, Commissioner Lawson. With that, we are adjourned. Thank you very much.